Do you have thoughts on stuff, whether it's popular or not?
Yeah.
And I don't, I have none.
Oh.
I want the space. All right, uh, all right, so six fifteen, we'll call the meeting to order. Um, just so everyone knows, the meeting is being recorded. Uh, we are holding the meeting tonight with a remote option for one of our members, which, um, in accordance with emergency order twelve, which is allowing us to conduct the business of the district. Um, during the pandemic, you make sure everyone is as safe as possible. Um, so, uh, we will have rolls, votes. On Holly for her vote, because we're all here.
Ally.
That.
It's so good. The contenders.
Are, uh, who you're with and why you're attending remotely.
Okay, Holly Kennedy, I'm at home. Um, my husband's here, but he is outside shoveling snow right now, so he's not in the, in the house, so I don't know if he'll be in for a while. Um, and I'm attending remotely because of, you know, the pandemic, increasing cases, case in the school.
Right, um, and I feel like I'm forgetting one of my things I've gotta do. I think it's being recorded, so, all right, so why don't we just jump into, uh, jump into the minutes, you've got a group of you, you've got public and non-public minutes for December second, December ninth, um, you have public minutes for December fourteenth and public minutes for January sixth. We can do them singly or as a group.
Um, I would move to approve them all, uh, as a group.
Okay.
All right, motion in a second to approve, uh, all these units as a group. Is there any discussion, corrections? I have a few corrections.
I should note that the one-six is not on the agenda.
Uh, the one-six is on the revised agenda that Ann mailed out. And if anybody needs a copy of those minutes, I'd be happy to.
I don't have.
I, um, would like to review it.
Okay, you got it.
Yeah, I probably didn't, I didn't check the mail.
I sent it out last week.
Yeah, I didn't check the mail today.
No, I sent it, I sent it via email last week.
Oh, I must have missed it, I apologize.
So hopefully these aren't a journey, but you can certainly feel it.
I, I would concur with that.
Uh, all right, so the corrections that I have, um, are on, let's see, so the minutes for December second, uh, the first page down by the bottom, uh, we're talking about the budget, uh, it says the board stated that they would like to see a decrease in the budget to a flat budget. Uh, the entire board, and Kayla, you were absent that time.
Mm-hmm.
The board wanted a decrease in the budget, but they did not think a flat budget was feasible. I was the one who was looking for a flat budget, so if we could just clarify that I was looking for a flat and everyone else just wanted a decrease. Um, and then just bear with me, I gotta just jump through this a little bit. On the... Uh, the December, no, it's like the December ninth minutes. Um, in the public portion down by the bottom, after citizens' comments, uh, the motion moved to go into non-public, uh, that should be K Hemlo, not K Chemo.
Not usually, I don't catch that.
And I think that's all I have on the minutes. And bear with me, I'm gonna be jumping back and forth between the two agendas, because I'm a... Anybody else have anything?
Do I need to abstain, because I wasn't there?
You don't have to, if you're, you know, agreeing with the minutes, or you can if you want to, but, uh, you can, uh, vote on the minutes as they're, put it off, you know what I mean?
Yep, that works.
Uh, all right, so a motion second, we have the discussion, so all of us in favor of accepting, uh, that minutes as amended, say aye.
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 Holly, aye, and a vote?
Aye.
All right, then motion passes. Um, so then we're gonna move down to the budget update if needed. Who wanted to do that? Holly, does that mean anything?
No, just to let the board know that, um, we, um, we have To- uh, Tom and myself and, you know, whichever administrators, Wayne, I believe is gonna be there, um, and, um, we are meeting with the budget committee on Monday, the first, um, at, they're gonna be at the S A U and on Zoom, uh, to just, um, so they can, uh, you know, give their approval on the warrant articles and ask any final questions. And then the budget hearing is on Wednesday, the third, um, I know there's a Zoom link, I, I believe Ann sent it out, maybe, maybe not, maybe she just put it on her calendar, so, but it'll be, if you, if we don't have it, we'll make sure we get it out, um, I have it, that's the third, I believe, at six, I'd have to look, school board goes first. They're doing it down, um, it's a hybrid, but, um, but they're doing it at the town hall upstairs, um, it's really echoey, so, uh, you know, just forewarn you, it might be a little difficult to hear, but if any of you wanna zoom in, you can do that, um, they're gonna have, uh, any citizens that show up, I believe they're gonna try and put them up in the balcony so that we, they, everybody can be distanced, but, so that's when, Wednesday the third. But I think that's pretty much all we have, I mean, under the financial, under the actual budget section, we could do more, unless you have questions for Tom or I.
Well, Ann has a question.
Good note, the meeting starts at six-thirty.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
The budget meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and the budget meeting on the first is, is, is six, and it's, you know, Holly and the select administrators, not the full board, right?
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So probably we're gonna make it anyway, so.
I didn't have that written down.
All right, Wayne, did you have anything else, budget related?
Give me unmute.
You, just give muted.
Wayne, you have to unmute.
Vote a twenty-twenty.
All right, did you hear me now?
I can.
You're on mute.
Sorry about that. So there is a great deal of work that's being done at the legislative level to fill the holes, uh, that were, uh, part of the fiscal disparity aid, uh, crunch from a year ago, and there's also work, uh, Jay Khan sponsored a bill, uh, that has to do with the free or reduced lunch to kind of make us whole, uh, because as you know, once there was a waiver that was unilateral, uh, there was a decrease in number of applications. Uh, we expected that, and I'm sure it's happening almost everywhere, if not everywhere, so he has a bill to get us back to our numbers of the fall twenty-nineteen. So the, uh, the revenue picture is starting to come in play. Uh, there's also a huge, um, effort, uh, in the bill from the Biden administration to make sure that there's no costs, uh, that we have to, uh, concur that are related to the pandemic, so there's a lot of work to get, kind of get schools back and, you know, in play, uh, so the revenue picture's looking a lot better from both federal level. We're also expecting about a hundred and eighty thousand next month, that's, uh, part of the stimulus package from December. So, although there's not, you know, there's still some things in the air, uh, but as far as the state's ability to fund its obligation and as far as our ability to fund those costs that are directly related to the pandemic, uh, I think we're in a much better place than we were just a few weeks ago.
Did anybody have any questions for Wayne? Did anybody have, else have anything to say or questions on budget stuff in general? No, ready to move on? All right, so the COVID-nineteen update, return to school contact tracing protocols, uh, who would like to start that? Wayne, is that, is that gonna be you, thing?
Well, I could start it, um, you know, we've, we've, I think we've done a great job, and if you look at number of days we've had, uh, in session with our students, uh, we're certainly in the probably top ten, twenty percent around the state of K-12 schools. However, uh, we did have an incident where a student or where an individual in our, in our, uh, learning environment, uh, was here on Tuesday and Wednesday of last week. They were home on Thursday and Friday because they had learned of a close contact, uh, they were tested on Friday, or they were tested on Thursday, and on Monday, uh, we learned that that individual was positive, uh, as a consequence, we are now in fully remote through next Friday, uh, so we, we instituted the procedure that was agreed by the board, and, uh, at this point in time, uh, I don't know of any other cases. I do think that the community spread, although it's still very high, is starting to decrease, uh, and so that's great news, and certainly our ability to deal with some of these issues is, is more refined, uh, every time we go through it. Uh, we do have a couple of things that we're working on relative to communication with parents, uh, and staff, and just to make sure that we clean that up as far as immediacy. Um, and I know that, uh, we have at least one school nurse online, if there's any questions that are more health-related, uh, we could, I think we could answer those.
Are there any questions for anybody in the board?
This would have been so helpful at the beginning of the story.
What's that?
All of the stuff they gave us. I know, this, I wish they had given this stuff in, you know, August would have been lovely.
Well, 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 we have another packet of stuff at, at the beginning.
I know, this is just very... I like this stuff.
Okay.
Um, so I wanted to kind of throw something out there after looking at all of the information that V H H S has given us and the vaccines and everything. Um, so our current policy is that the second there's a positive case, we go fully remote for the ten days. And so I am suggesting that we revise our policy and follow V H H S's guidelines when there's a positive case.
So what would that change our policy?
So it wouldn't be we go district-wide remote. It would be to follow, you know how you're supposed to call them.
So then the policy, then, then our policy would just be to make that call and do whatever they say?
Basically to follow their recommendation, so for the elementary school, it would most likely be that whole class, because just the way it set up, or in the middle high school is obviously different. So that is...
All right, does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Oh, I know what I forgot to say at the beginning, um, Holly, I'm gonna do my best to keep my eyes on you, but there's a lot of people on tonight, so you're really, really small. Um, if, if I'm not acknowledging you or if I'm not seeing you, I have my phone right here, so please text me, because I wanna make sure you have your input, okay?
Okay.
All right, that's what I, I, I knew I was forgetting something. Um, all right, so, uh, comments from the board on Kayla's thoughts?
I mean, I have a comment, but if you wanna go with the people there first, that's fine with me.
Me? I'm not sure changing the policy now, uh, at the mid-year is a good thing. I think it's certainly something to look at, extend.
Julia. Holly, go ahead.
I, I didn't hear the second part of Jim's where he heard, said about, he doesn't think changing here is a good thing, and then he trailed off.
Oh, okay, uh, no. I, I think it's something to look at, if, if we have to come up with a policy for next year.
Okay.
Holly, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I feel, I don't think we should change, um, you know, I, I know the, you know, H, Health and Human Services has, uh, you know, the procedures in place and the contact, you know, the tracing of who's sitting, sitting near the kids and whatever, and, um, and like Kayla did say, it's easier in the elementary than the high school, because, um, you know, they, they cross paths so much and it's, it's difficult to tell, but, um, you know, a- as we know, they, as we see on social media, you know, they're out, a lot of kids and families are out doing mixing and, you know, traveling and going over to Swansea to play basketball with those kids over there, um, so I'm not in favor of, uh, you know, changing our policy. I know it's a pain, and I, but I think I've seen some indications on social media that people were grateful for, more, more people were grateful for it this time because of how the new variants are coming out, which are really, really contagious, and more kids are affected actually than adults by the variant strains that are coming out now, so I, I'm just not in favor of changing, uh, midstream either.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm kind of in agreement with Holly. I, I, I think that we still have, um, a pretty big problem out there, obviously, I don't think things are really on the decrease, um, I think that, then like Holly said, all of the variants that are coming out right now, we don't even go to all the impact of that, it's gonna be, because they're all still, still new, and if it can turn around to something else, I think things are, you know, you know, in a dicier situation than they were, and I would, if, if our policy was a little bit more stringent than V H H S, I would rather go that route than not, personally.
I think one thing too to consider, slightly, slightly off topic, uh, is that if we have a February vacation, do we wanna consider what we did after the Christmas vacation? Go remote after that for a certain period.
I, I can't tell you, I've, I've seen a few comments out there as far as, um, uh, people being concerned that, uh, we're gonna back for like a week or something, or they're gonna break, you know, they're like, a lot of just, two weeks? Okay, um, you know, so they were, they were like, oh, that's, and I know the back and forth, I do think the back and forth is disruptive, you know, I, I don't, I don't think there's anyone that can deny that, you know? You do lose something that day you go out, takes a little bit to come back, you know? Um, as much as we're trying to do stuff on a dime, I think we're doing a decent job of that, I think there is disruption, so it's something to consider, but I, um, you know, know that we had a, a comment, um, yeah, I, I, I've had a citizen comment about, you know, well, just stay out until after Denver break, well, okay, that's a fun suggestion, and then there was someone who suggested, and I might be saying this wrong, uh, though if you go remote, you know, as opposed to just waiting for ten days, you'll make sure, um, it's like a, a, a week or so before there's any other positive cases, and, you know, so there's different comments out there, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot to consider, you know?
I, can I?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So I, all of the comments I have heard are parents being stressed out, pushed kind of to the max, uh, we have a lot of fear about job loss. Oh, sorry, I'm not, not bad. Um, so basically just parents being afraid they're going to lose their job. I have two kids who are doing remote learning, and it is not easy to do at all, it's a disruption, it's, it's just different, it, they're definitely not getting as much out of it, and I think for a lot of our families, this is more than they can handle, and I think, like, we were back in school for four days, one week, and then one day, and that's the second I picked Aubrey up, she burst into tears, she actually said that she started crying in class, this is a lot for our students to be dealing with, and I just think we need to consider, there are some families who don't even have the resources to worry that we are in a pandemic because they have bigger worries. So we need to remember that, yes, we're in a pandemic, but there are other situations and other factors.
Well, and I know, uh, oh, sorry, go ahead, do you?
No, I was just gonna re, well, as I was thinking, uh, that was one of the thoughts that keeps coming back to me. Um, I mean, I personally, I'm, I mean, I, I voted to approve this policy, I think that it may be fairly on the extreme side to shut down the entire district for one positive case, that seemed realistic, um, when we thought this was gonna be over soon. Um, but I'm also in my head listening to administrators in this room, to, uh, feedback from the community about the incredible hardships, not only financially, but, uh, physically, emotionally, that the stress of having so much remote time, uh, is causing a lot of families in our community, and that it's very, very challenging to find the balance between, uh, you know, some of these kids are safer when we can get eyes on them, I mean, that's a, that, that is, that is something that, that resonated with me, and I keep thinking about it, if it was Ann, you just said, some of these kids we really need to get our eyes on, and if we go remote now, and then we stay until February vacation, and then we two weeks after that, it's just not sustainable for many families in this community, they don't have the luxury of being able to be home and remote with their kids and not worry about putting food on the table.
And the, so my other concern being, so I am able to be home, and this is stressful, if I wasn't home, that would mean, uh, we're gonna have families choosing, do I keep my job and provide for my family and leave my child home, home alone, or do I stay home with them, because that's what, you know, legally you're supposed to do? I think we're gonna be forcing very tough decisions, and I, I don't feel comfortable with that.
Jim, did you wanna add anything? No. No, I will, I will fit it in.
I don't wanna influence your decision, but I know the Winchester School Board revisits this question every month, so I know when we come back, we have a board meeting right off in February, maybe revisit it at that meeting, and that'll give you some time, and then you can reflect on how many cases we have right at, in the community, so that'll give you some time, because we are out until February eighth.
Yep.
And I think that week you have a board meeting? Well, if it's the second Wednesday, it must be the...
Right.
So, uh, that's what I'm thinking, you know, there, there are no easy answers to this, and I, I, I think you have done a wonderful job, because...
Why don't we, why don't we do this, jump ahead?
So, I too have given this a lot of thought, and, um, I'm not sure how, I haven't talked to anybody about it, but, um, I do believe in the elementary school, because they're contained in their class, because they only go to one special, that, um, you know, there could be, um, it could be done where, uh, that one classroom would have to be self-isolated, so we're talking anywhere from the largest class of sixteen down to the smallest kindergarten class of eight, you know? Um, so I think it's doable if that's what people would wanna do because of our cohorting, and I don't have any idea what the nurse feels about that, like I said, I hadn't discussed it at all.
So I know in my own case, um, you know, uh, my kids are a little bit older, you know, I've got one that's graduated and, and one that's senior, so, um, you know, my older, my younger son, um, has been a remote, um, and that was my decision, was, he was not coming back. He did come back for a second semester, because there's one course in particular that he really wants to take, if he wants to take him personally, so I did, you know, have a conversation with him and let him, you know, weigh the options with me, we had a very long discussion about it, and tried to let him, you know, be, exert some of that adulthood that the teenagers wanna get a feel for, but, you know, we know they may not all be quite ready for yet, but you wanna give them, you know, a shot at it, and, um, he decided, he did decide to come back, so I let him, um, and I am very seriously at this point considering, uh, doing my parental detail and, um, having him, you know, just be remote, I haven't made that decision yet. Um, you know, but I think that it's reasonable to, um, keep this on the agenda and revisit it every, every meeting, and have the discussion every meeting and see if things change. If something, I don't, from my own personal opinion, if something was to change drastically, you know, for the positive, you know, I would be more in favor of doing it, and right now my vote would be no, but I'm only one person. Julia?
Just one other thought, and I agree, we should take it up again in February, something that's very, very unique and still that is a real benefit to the community, I think, is that, and you just expressed it, we are offering families an option, so the families who aren't comfortable with the policy or who are not comfortable with in-class learning, they have the option to make that choice, to be fully remote. If we were a school district that was not offering that choice, listen, we're hybrid, you have to be in two days a week, you have to be in three days a week, whatever, we've taken some of that option away from them, but the way it's right now is so unique to our school district is that if you are a family that's not comfortable, then, then remote learn, if you're a family that doesn't have that option or can't do that, then you also have a full option to be in class full-time, so that's a risk perhaps, you know, that they're, 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 I know, differently about, so the fact that they can choose fully remote is, is an advantage that may lead to the, me personally agreeing that I think one case in the elementary school and to shut down the whole district for two weeks is a bit extreme.
Okay, uh, Holly, you had it, right?
Yeah, I, I just wanna make a clarification, every district in the state, per the governor's order, when everybody went back in the fall, every district in the state has the option, uh, every, every district in the state had to give parents the option to be remote if they wanted their, their kids to be remote, so we're not unique in that, every single district is offering a remote option. Um, but, um, also, when, what day are we scheduled to come back now, February what?
Eighteenth.
Eighth, so our February meeting is the tenth, so revisiting this in February would be too late. Uh, if we're gonna say, let's make the decision in February and see how it goes, I thought that's what I heard, but I could be wrong.
Uh, what we, what we were talking about at the moment was to keep it on the agenda, um, as a monthly item, and to kind of keep our ears and eyes open as far as what the situation for out there, and then revisit it, and if something was to change, or, I mean, really, at any point, any of you can either make a motion or do whatever you want, you know, but, um, um, as I understand it, we're gonna keep it on the agenda, uh, discuss it every month, um, weigh the circumstances of the community, and if we, at some point, wanted to make a change, do it then. You know, certainly if somebody wanted to make a motion, then they can, um, I, tonight I know how I would vote, I don't know how I would vote next month, I would have to see what the circumstances were, but I, I certainly know how I would vote on it tonight.
Okay, so, so it, so as of right now, and this point in the discussion, we're, we're planning to come back on the eighth, and every month while the pandemic's going on, we'll revisit if we wanna amend the policy or not, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. I just wanna make sure that I, you know, had it all straight.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Does anybody else have more on this subject, or are we?
So, one piece.
Okay, are we, are we good with reading it for a regular review, or did someone want to take a motion? Because I don't wanna...
I can't leave it until February, because we come back the eighth, so hopefully that will be next time.
You guys okay with that? Mm-hmm, yep, so, Holly, you're okay with that?
What did she say? I'm sorry.
She's, she's okay with waiting, uh, she's, uh, we're telling that, so we'll be, we'll be on the test, she's okay with waiting until February to discuss it again.
Okay, yep.
You good with that?
I heard part of you, Kayla, and you trailed off, that's all.
Need to hug my remote.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right, so then the second part of that was the contact tracing protocols, and I know, uh, we had gotten, um, the packet, the V H H S workbook, and we had gotten an email from Jan, uh, the email from Jan pretty much told me everything I needed to know, did you guys get all that?
I think I missed that one.
Yeah, I didn't get an email from Jan.
I didn't either.
Was that part of, uh, some stuff that was emailed, or was that part of the board packet? Because we're a couple weeks off now, so it's...
Uh, I think everything that Jan, Jan gave us, uh, you know, kind of combined a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, there's a lot in here.
There's a lot, the workbook is like twenty-fourty, so, um, well, I guess, and I'll just throw it out there, because my question's my answer, so is, does anyone have any questions on the contact tracing protocols?
So I, I have a question about what you just said, so you asked questions of Jan, and Jan got back to you, you, like, individually?
No, no, I put, I put, I, because when I sent you the agenda, Dan, I asked to have the, um, uh, the COVID update, return to school, kept on there, and there was some concern for some of the contact tracing protocols, when is it done, when is it done, when is it not done? So I asked to have that put on there, and at one point, um, and I thought it was via email, I got this information that we have in a board packet along with the, um, with a note from Jan, which I thought was in this packet, but I can't find it at the moment.
I didn't see a note.
But no, I was not asking questions outside of a board. I got this information that we have in a board packet along with the, with a note from Jan, which I thought was in this packet, but I can't find it at the moment.
I didn't see a note.
But no, I was not asking questions outside of a board.
Oh, oh, no, no, that's what I, I just thought you meant your questions, you said your questions were answered from Jan's email and I must have missed Jan's email, that's all.
Yeah, and I'm not finding it right now, but it's what I'm getting.
That way it makes sense.
Okay, so.
As board chair.
Okay, so you don't have a copy of that. Well, right, but that's what I'm saying is I don't, I don't see that, I, I don't see that in this.
Page one was part of it.
Yeah, this was a much smaller document.
Yep.
I think it was in last month's packet. I put stuff in last month's packet also.
It's for this one. Well, why don't we just add any, why don't we ask any questions that we have? Because there were, you know, I had gotten questions from a couple of you guys too as far as, you know, when do we do it? When do we don't, when do we not do it? So why don't we just go through it and that way everyone will have the same information.
Yeah, I think this really breaks it all down too. This was part of the reason I felt like maybe we could handle not going fully remote because it's very thorough.
So can anyone speak to whether we do contact tracing and whether we do not do contact tracing? Elise, can you talk to us about that? Issue, Elise, can you talk to us about whether we do contact tracing and whether we don't do contact tracing?
Yeah, hi. So when we find out that there is a positive case, it's really kind of, okay, so we find out there's a positive case and I call the state. And then what contact tracing is, is you go forty-eight hours from when this, the person was contagious. So say, for example, this case that just happened, the person was in school Tuesday and Wednesday. They got the positive test results on Friday. Therefore, Wednesday, they were in school and they were contagious. We only go back forty-eight hours. And then you, then we need to find out the people that were within six feet of that contagious person for a cumulative ten minutes. So the desks are not six feet apart at this time. So when students are sitting in their chair, at their desks, anyone sitting around a student or sitting close to a teacher would be considered a close contact. And then we talk to other people that travel to school and we do our best, we do have clipboards outside the door. We're supposed to sign in and out of classrooms. And then we just have to take people's word from there. And I ask, do you believe that you were in, within six feet of this person for a cumulative ten minutes on the day of Wednesday? Does that answer the question?
Well, for me, yeah. Do you guys have questions or, Holly?
Yeah, I just have a question for Elise on that. So I was reading it and, and I had seen other stuff previously and maybe it's changed that the CDC, and this was a little while ago, said that you're contagious forty-eight to seventy-two hours prior to the start of symptoms or they count it as prior to your positive, when the, your specimen was drawn for the test if you were asymptomatic. So I guess it sounds like it's changed to just forty-eight and not seventy-two. And my second question to that is, so this positive case we just had, found out on Fri-, well, found out on Friday, or did you, I'm sorry, did you say they had the test taken on Friday?
Test taken on Thursday, positive results on Friday.
Okay, so based on the stuff you gave us, it was forty-eight, were they asymptomatic? They just did it because they were exposed or did they have symptoms?
So they were asymptomatic. What happened was the exposure happened on a Sunday. They found out about the exposure Wednesday evening. So then this, the person did not come to school Thursday or Friday because they were considered a close contact. Thursday got tested, Friday they got the positive results. Therefore, we had to move forward with, we, actually the school found out Monday that the test was positive.
Yeah, all right, so they're asymptomatic. So according to what you gave us, you, you go back forty-eight hours from when the specimen was drawn. It doesn't matter what day the test comes back, right? So that makes sense with Tuesday. I was just concerned because I remembered, and like I said, it might have changed, but I remember reading from, I don't know if it was in the New Hampshire, Health and Human Services or just the CDC, will take the test, the case that we found, one of the cases we found out about on Christmas Eve, the person started having symptoms on Monday, the twenty-first, and so we went back forty-eight hours and it was a Saturday, so we weren't in school. And we were told that there was no contact tracing for that, but I guess maybe that had changed it for the second. Seventy-two would have put it back to Friday, so I'm just, I, you know, I, I, I am confident that we're following it all, but I just get concerned because it is complicated. It is, you know, because if we, like with this case, if we were to look back from Friday, when the test came back, that doesn't really mean anything. It's when it was drawn. The test could take three days to come back, you know, and the, the result date really shouldn't matter. It should be like it says, when, when the specimen was taken, so.
Yeah, I, I think that you're correct. It is when the specimen was taken. So the students, and then when there is someone that is symptomatic, it's from their first day of showing symptoms.
Symptoms, yeah, which they might not even know what that was. If the first symptom was a sniffle, they might not even realize it for a couple of days till, you know, so it is tricky.
I think that's exactly why this is so difficult because there can be someone in the school shedding the virus for a week and we don't know. And I just want to say one more thing is that right now, we are not cohorting like I think, maybe like people think that we are, but because of special ed and because of other things, we're not, students leave the classroom, staff go in and out of classrooms, we're not in secluded pods. I just, I want that to be clear.
Yeah, I, I noticed that too because when they said they go to one special, that's not really accurate either. Because like you said, special ed and, and other things, so, yeah. That was, that was only my clarification. Thank you, Elise.
Sure, so when I do call DHHS, I, a nurse contacts me and I work closely with that nurse and they give me direction. And the direction I've been given since the beginning is forty-eight hours.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And on a kind of related thing since it came up, so we are not currently six feet apart with our desks, what are we? Is that part of a?
Well, if you go by the desk, the desks are about three feet apart and each desk is about two feet wide. So we're from five to six feet apart.
And how about, because I know there were challenges.
There are challenges and what we've, what we've done to make sure that children don't move their desk because they are social animals is put blue tape on the floor. Sean Lee has been really helpful with this and we monitor it very closely because as you know, you walk into a classroom and you'll see the kids clustered together and say, ah! You know, so the blue tape is on the floor in a lot of classrooms for that reason. And in the cafeteria, we replaced the red markers on the floor with red tiles from your building. So now we've got the red tiles, they're permanently in place and it's a constant.
I was wondering where those missing tiles went.
So, so what do you, what do you think your average of your classroom?
I think we are averaging six feet and I think the ancillary support you gave us was huge.
Okay.
Yes.
Good, all right. Okay, does anybody?
We still haven't had our walkthrough because we keep getting bumped.
Yes.
So maybe the expected date back is February 8th, maybe that week we can get together and the tour can happen.
Yeah, let me see, because I know I've been stressed with work and I have been having a really hard time meeting my responsibilities, you know, here on the board just because of, you know, everybody wanting to order everything to their house and I have to deliver it, so. Go to the store and get your toilet paper. So, so yeah, but we should absolutely figure out a date for the elementary school.
Will you, do you still have Friday?
I do.
Okay, so we could.
We can do a Friday. I was just trying to be respectful of Wayne's time.
Oh, right, sorry.
But we can, we can figure something out. We'll help with seventy. All right, does anybody else have any other, anything else on agenda item number two there? No, we're good?
I have one question. It isn't about contact tracing, but it is about not really, I guess, return to school because it was, so it's COVID-related. So we started the new quarter on Friday and I know, you know, we had kids coming back from remote. Some kids went remote, some kids came back. So I just wanted to, and this is just, you know, I, I think we do this each quarter and ask this, that with the number of kids coming back, are we still able to really keep distance? Are we running into problems? Are we running out of ancillary classrooms? You know, all that. We said we revisit that at each quarter just to make sure we're still good. And if it ever gets to be too many kids come back, we, you know, have to really think about it, so.
All right, so in our building, we're still holding about nineteen, twenty percent being remote, which it, the number, the number is about the same, but the kids might be different. One issue we do have, however, is staffing. So I had one staff member return from maternity leave. I am expecting another to return February 8th. But however, I have two other staff members through HR will probably be teaching remotely. So we're shifting the ancillary staff around and it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough. You know, as, as people fatigue and have issues at home, I, I, I think it's gonna impact staff more than we anticipated.
Do you have any thoughts of what we can do or what you would need to solve the problem? Or do you think that's just kind of fluid?
We, we have a schedule now. As long as everybody is happy with the schedule, we're good to go right now. But if I had one more staff member come and say, for health reasons, I have to start teaching remotely, I'll be in a classroom.
Okay.
And I don't, I would, I would belish it, but I think that's, we're gonna be doing a lot like Mr. Bogio is doing, is covering classes.
Okay. So how are you doing in your building?
In terms of the remote students, I don't have the exact number, but I think it's not significant enough. And, and we had set up desks so that if all the kids were in there, we had them. So our enrollment's up to about five from second quarter to third quarter in general, two hundred and seventy-seven kids now. One of them is gonna stay, well, actually they're not registered yet, but one of them is gonna stay remote from moving in from where they were. They want to continue remote where they had been remote. And staffing is a nightmare.
Okay, all right, awesome. Holly, did that answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
Is that because of people being quarantining or?
Yeah, it's a combination of health, existing health issues, quarantine, and, and those people come off quarantine. But it's a combination of that and having the fifth grade cohort uses up two subs every single day. And then, you know, people have their lives to go about. They have to bring their children to their doctor's appointments and their personal days and that kind of thing. So, but as soon as you, you know, we're following the rules that if you have a sore throat, you don't come to school until you get a ten days or the, you know, the testing done, then you don't come back. So it, it has a cumulative effect, like I said in the last board report.
Everybody good?
Well, actually I did want to ask, do we have a COVID nineteen coordinator? That was one of the things in the information, the packet. So I don't know if we had that. It kind of sounds like the principal's, okay. So nurses.
Yeah, and then on the alternate, I don't know who the alternate is for Ann, but on the alternate for the elementary school, if the school nurse is unavailable.
You ready to move on to the program of studies? So we are moving on to the program of studies. Who wants to address that?
So I see Cody Crawford is here and he's gonna unmute, I hope, and introduce some of the changes. And if you haven't met Cody, he's our high school counselor who came in after school started.
Hi folks, so first off, thanks for having me. I, I've met Sean, but I haven't met, I don't think anybody else yet. Super excited to be supporting our students in the Hinsdale community. So in terms of the program of studies, we met together as, as a group and there's a few teachers, administration, counselors. And we really aim to try to increase some of our program offerings if we could. So we took submissions from all the faculty on anything they might want to teach or change. So basically we had a few new course proposals, we had a few course edits. And then there was, you know, some things that we kind of adapted to meet different needs. So some of the highlights, there wasn't too many changes, but some of the highlights, so we were thinking about adding a intro to business class, which was offered in the past. There's an astronomy class. We were also considering combining, having a section of combined economics and personal finance, specifically for our students who are on a twenty-credit diploma track. Because in the twenty-credit diploma track, the, I believe it's, I believe it's the economics is, is not required, but it's still a competency that we feel like would benefit the students. Unfortunately, just due to COVID, our relationship with our nursing program has kind of faltered a little bit and we're not able to offer the licensed nursing assistant program. And yeah, so and other than that, there was just some slight changes offered by faculty within, within the courses that we already offer. So yeah, I don't know if that kind of covers at least kind of our, I know you guys received the document, but I don't know if anybody has any questions from there or if you guys want me to chat, chat a little bit about kind of how we move on in terms of processes of students selecting courses and things like that, but.
I just wanted to ask if the LNA program, is that just COVID-related? Do we think that might come back or is it probably done for good?
I think it's kind of undetermined. I think there's maybe a few factors. I think COVID was a big one, especially this year. I think that there was also an issue where some of, they were kind of expecting a longer commitment, you know, especially from some of our seniors to, to work with them afterwards. And I think they weren't necessarily getting that commitment, so at least that's my understanding. That's another, another reason, so.
I would anticipate that if things change, we could offer it through the ELO program. That's always how it started. It wasn't a separate program, it was in yellow.
Does anyone else have anything on program of studies?
Is all the graduate, like all the info in the beginning, is that all new? I feel like that's all new.
Sorry, the, can you say it again?
Like the require, it's, there's just so much info in the beginning that we had talked about wanting to make sure our students knew.
It was added last year.
Okay.
And there is one error. It's on page forty, accounting two is actually, it's a one-credit class instead of half a credit, so there's a typo we found.
Very informative.
Yeah, I remember, if I remember in the discussion from last year correctly, you want to make sure everyone had everything and it was really easy to find, it was crystal clear.
The valedictorian.
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, it is very.
Holly, did you have anything on the program of studies?
Nope.
All right, if nobody else has any questions, then we'd be looking to, for a motion to accept the program of studies. Yes, I'll make that move.
Second.
Right, motion in the second to accept the program of study. That's directed for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Holly, all right. All right, good, motion carries. All right, so then we have first reading for policies, JICC, JLCD, JLCD dash. JLCD F one, so JLCD F two, JLCD F three, and JLCD dash one. So I need a motion to accept as a first reading. Yes, we have a new agenda.
Oh, I have the old one.
The resolution's already done, so. No, because it's already done, Jim's already done as well.
It will be discussed a little bit, I mean, I've sort of finished this.
All right, okay. So looking for a motion to accept both policies as a first reading.
Yeah, I'll second.
Right, motion in the second to accept those, I think, policies as a first reading. Is there any further discussion? Holly, do you have anything?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, motion carries. Alright, motion carries. Um, did we have? So we have a discussion of school district meeting. Uh, we're probably gonna do that after we just talk with Matt often. Because we didn't get legal information as far as uh, our ability to move school district meeting to a different date. Given the whole pandemic and stuff. Um, there's a bunch of, there's a legislation out there that's gonna allow us to do it. Um, Holly and I have sat in on uh, a webinar for H B eleven twenty-nine. I think that was also discussed at H S B A. Holly, was that, is that correct?
Yep, that was, that was discussed at the delegate assembly as well, yep.
We also have emergency order twenty, uh, S eighty-three that came through, that's uh, gonna help us with that. So um, we're gonna, we go into non-public, we're gonna have a meeting with the attorney to see what the recommendations are, see what our requirements are, uh, because each of those things requires us to do certain things in order to, uh, you know, be legal and all that. So we wanna make sure we have all the information before we make any decisions.
So we're talking about moving?
From March to a different date.
Okay.
Or keep it in March if that's what everyone decides to do, but, you know, the selectmen are having, you know, selectmen started having their discussion from this as well. We discussed it on Monday. Um, they have not come to any resolution exactly what they're doing. Um, when we have the discussion, hopefully, uh, Richard Johnson will be here, I believe he's coming in at seven thirty.
I thought I saw John.
Is he on? Okay. So um, you know, and the legislation does say, uh, in consultation with the moderator. So we will be talking with him as well as the uh, the attorney. So if there's any initial questions, we can toss those around, but I think it should be more relevant after we get more information.
Yeah.
Holly, you okay with that?
Yep.
Alright, so uh, let's see, let's go on to any other business to be conducted by the board? Does anybody have?
I have one thing, uh, just to let the board know that the Hinsale Education Foundation has increased its uh, board membership from five to seven. Um, and Sarah Udon and April Anderson are now associated with the project.
Does anybody else have anything?
Nope.
Um, the only things that I have, trying to determine when to best do this. I had um, sent you guys uh, some draft templates of some uh, your communications. I was just trying to figure out a way to kind of streamline our communication process. Um, I did get some feedback from Jim. Jim, I haven't incorporated that in here yet, but uh, I brought those drafts tonight.
Did you see in the paperwork from D H H S, they have a couple of templates too that were super, super informative.
Yes.
I think one of them, it was supposed to be the beginning of the year, but since we're just getting them, that maybe we could.
Yeah, I actually, I actually reviewed those uh, before I did these.
Yep.
Um, and some of the ones they had in there were like, and as you saw, pretty extensive.
Right.
And those, I think, are, you know, good for some email and stuff like that.
Right.
Quick calls unless we want, we have to use the Donald.
Yeah, no, I think those are more send home.
Yes, right. So, so if you wanna.
Yeah, no, those are more send home.
We wanna give that more to her. That's, I'm all for it, but.
And do you wanna read the two pages back?
So, you know, I don't know how you guys, we never, we had to postpone our meetings. We never really voted on the use, we never really had. We never really discussed it, you know, and we have used it a few times, but um, it's really up to you guys to decide what you want to do. But it just seems to me that, you know, we need to streamline that process, you know, I will be completely honest with you, uh, as I said before. Um, I don't think, I don't think I could emphasize enough how busy the post office is right now. Um, and I can't necessarily be reviewing, you know, every message. So if you have a template, it can plug in some things and whatever, that's great. Um, either that or if you guys don't wanna use that, we need to kind of tweak our communication plan to kind of take me out of some of that. Because I just don't have the availability right now. And I'm fine either way, we got a project.
I like having a template. I think there's enough to do with contact tracing and stuff. We don't need to reinvent the wheel every time.
Yeah, no, I would agree with that too. I would say the last communication that went out, there was some confusion because we sent out the template, but we didn't say, oh, but there was no closure, so we're, we're not going remote.
Yeah, that was, I, the family, that was the one to staff, the one that went out, the family.
Okay, is that, that was, I instantly thought, well, wait a minute, they're gonna see that and they're gonna instantly think.
Yeah, and the phone call that said we are not going remotely.
The phone call was corrected.
Yeah. Okay, I didn't see anything that was corrected. I just saw what you sent out. So I just wanna make sure that we're very clear whether or not. You know, and I even questioned whether or not we needed to make that notification, if there's no risk of, if there's no risk
Right.
That's going to the school community, doesn't need to be put out as as a notice.
But I think because the chief is also reporting, and I know there was one incident near the beginning where I think it was, people were asking if it was a student or something, so I think it, it's not a bad idea to just let everyone know what's going on.
Well, we told people that we would, so we should.
Parents.
If we wanna revisit that at some point, we can, but it is what we told people. So if we do change it, I think we need to tell people that we are making that change. Because we said we were doing the course of action. So I think that's what, rightfully what they should expect from us. You know, but if we did a change, we can, we could be.
Oh, I just, I just, I am doing my diligence too as the board member. I got, I received a few comments about over information, about why are you telling, sending out these notifications that then say there's no risk that my child was exposed? Why do I need to know that? You know, I, we don't wanna de- that, I guess part of it was my reaction to that, why, I'm like, well, maybe that's true, you know, when we end with there's no risk of exposure. We don't wanna desensitize people to these notices that were, that were inundating with either. So we wanna send out meaningful notifications that people will pay attention to.
And I think, you know, for for me, you've had that policy.
Right.
You know, for me, um, I think that we also have parents out there who um, are trying to make the decision, do I keep my kid in person, do I accept him remote, what do I do? Because it's a, it's a tough choice. And I think that putting the information out there, letting them know that, you know, there are cases that are happening, you know, can help them perform their decision too. So I understand, I understand where it's, some people be like, oh, I don't need to know that. But other parents may be like, oh, jeez, you know, one more case and I'm just gonna keep my kid out. You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I see both sides of it. I just wanna make sure that it's meaningful communication, because like I said, you know, I, I get a lot of emails from the same places over and over again.
Sure.
And if they, if our work, you start ignoring them, right? So that's why we just need to be careful with that.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I want to agree. So is everybody okay with continuing to use this? Holly, are you okay?
What did you say? Is everyone okay with what?
Uh, continue to use this.
Continue, I'm sorry, what?
Continue to use the template.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
I said, Jim had a few suggestions that I haven't put in here, I thought I will, you know, as far as I think was a the school board versus we or something like that.
Oh, yeah.
I know, speaking of de-sensitization.
Right, okay. I just wanna make sure.
Okay.
Um, and the other thing that I gave you, um, and I'm not sure if this is the best place to do it, but as I'm looking through the rest of the agenda, it probably is. Um. Uh, Holly, the correspondence you received, you think now or do you think later on? Um, with Simmons' comments, maybe?
The correspondence that you and I received today?
Yes.
I think that's a non-public. If it's the same, if it's the one I'm thinking of because of the situation?
Okay, then we'll do that non-public.
Okay, yeah, that would be, that would be my reaction.
Let me just quickly add that to my non-public list here with me a second, because we have a lot of non-public stuff uh, this month.
Just because the conversation that is gonna spin off from it, I think it'd be best, yeah.
Well, you have more experience with that, so I want to.
Oh, that is a list.
I do, I have a non-public list.
Oh, good.
Um, okay, so that's all I had. Does anybody else have anything for other business?
Oh, actually, just, oh, I do. Um, so you and I had discussed the Facebook.
Oh, yes.
Communication.
You wanna do that under Community Connections?
Oh, we can, that's fine. I just figured, I think you told me to bring it up at any other business.
Do, okay, that's fine. I don't, I don't, you're good.
Um, so I guess, so I might just be unclear, or we didn't make an official decision. But with Facebook communication, we have it set, so we have to approve any posts or anything. And do we want no posting at all? Cause that had been mentioned and I just wanna make sure, since I can do stuff on it, that I'm doing the correct thing.
So can I uh, tell you what, what I've done on it?
Yes.
And, you know, everyone, you guys all weigh in. So what I've done, when someone has uh, wanted to make a post on the Community Connections Facebook page, you know, it comes through with a post and we have to approve or decline.
Right.
So what I will do is, I'll look at the post, okay, and if it's a question that I think, um, you know, a whole bunch of people might have, you know, um, what I will do is, I won't approve the post, I won't put their post up there, but I'll pull the information together. I'll do a little blurb, you know, and where appropriate, I'll ask, you know, Wayne or the principals or whoever, um, always Wayne first. But you know, um, they're getting approval to make sure the message going out is correct. And then I will post it, um, so that the question is being answered, that's being answered through a poster and asked by to us. And then if it's something like, you know, what time is this or what time is that, if you've got a couple of those, um, I will contact that person individually and try to provide them. Remember the other night, I was asking you when something started?
Yep.
Um, I'll contact that person individually and say, no, no, here's them for schools, best place, but here's, make it safe to get. Because that's not really the type of uh, posting that we usually doing for that.
Right.
So that's what, that's what I do.
Okay. So is that what we want to create for a standard?
What do you, what do you guys want? You guys want?
Holly has a.
Holly, go ahead.
Yeah, just because I was the one who reached out to Kayla when I saw the post by a parent on the Community Connections page. And that's what I thought we had decided, and I went back and looked, like, we didn't take a vote, but I went back and looked at, I think it was maybe the September minutes or October. And we discussed that we wanted, um, you know, after having the page for a couple of months and seeing how it was going, that we wanted, we wanted to, it to be more of an, in, like, pushing information out from the district rather than a debate format, is I think how the minutes actually even worded it, informational rather than a debate. And if I remember correctly, the discussion at the time was, you know, and we all know the different groups in town that discussions, you know, people post and discussions can really spiral out. And I know a comment was actually, one, a negative comment was deleted from that post, so that also doesn't look great. Cause now people are like, oh, now the school board's censoring certain comments, so I.
One that had a swear in it, and I think that's reasonable for.
Oh, absolutely, but absolutely, but you, but you know how people are, which I'm surprised the swear got through, cause I thought we had control.
Me too, that's what I said.
We get, we get notified.
It lets us know it.
So we get notifications that uh, when someone wants to post, and there's the question of why. But it just says the word why triggers a notification to us.
Yeah, and teacher.
So that a swear got through.
I know, you know where my concerns are.
But, but I, like I said, I looked it up and I, I seem to have remembered the discussion that if we were gonna uh, ha- keep it to be uh, where people post and there's a lot of comments that whoever moderates it, which, which would be Sean and Kayla, like, would, it's almost like a full-time constant checking on it. So you'd have to, and I know.
We have it, so you can't just post. You can't just decide to go and post and it shows up. It does need to be approved. I did forget to turn off commenting though, so that was my fault. But I think it's also, I don't know, I go back and forth on that too, because I know it's for the district and we need to keep it appropriate, but I think I have actually had people say several times now that we seem unapproachable because you can't comment, like, you don't wanna hear what people have to say. And I don't want that to be how people feel, so that's sort of my balancing. It is a district thing, but I also want people to feel like they're, they can voice their opinion.
Can I, can I just make one, yeah, and I, I agree with, with most of that, um, but I mean, but if you turn off commenting, then really only the post, the co- the person who did the post, whose post was allowed, is getting there, say, like, there's no commenting. Um, yeah, so it's, so it is, it's like, you, you know, you know, on one hand and then on the other hand. And I know some districts do have that, but they also have, like, you know, full, not full-time social media people, but people who actually are really like S A U twenty-nine, bigger outfit, people who will really keep an eye on it, that, that we can't really do. So I, I, I've been liking how it's been going, because I think they have the parent group, they have like four different uh, community, different ones now. There's the town crier, the town crier, new news one, news two, news and info, you know what I mean? I, I think they have a lot of outlets, uh, the P T A has a page, so I, I think they have a lot of outlet to comment on school stuff. That's just my opinion.
Jim, what do you have?
I expressed concern about having a social media page in the first place. I'm not sure that it's appropriate for us even to participate in social media. So, cause we all know what can happen. We've all watched something escalate in two minutes. I mean, I know I, as soon as the notice goes out about another pa- case or something, I hop on and I'm like, oh, who's, oh dear, you know?
Yeah.
What, what, what are people saying? And then you just watch it escalate and turn into this hot mess. So um, I think people have plenty of places to uh, to, to air out whatever it is they wanna air out. I do feel like we need to seem approachable as a board. Um, so I'm not sure what the answer is for that, but I'm not sure social media is, is the appropriate place to be at all personally.
Jim?
Um, posts have to be approved, do comments have to be approved, or do comments go on?
Comments are generally turned off. In this particular case, we're talking about, they weren't.
Yeah, that's the thing, so.
It would be nice if they could be approved. I wonder, I have to get on my actual computer and see if that, because if that was an option, that would be a lot more doable. So then.
I just, comments start going up, or where to go up, then they could get put up there, multiply quicker than you could.
Right, right.
Take control of them.
That's what I'm saying, they, it just, these things can blow up and like.
Yeah, before you would even be able to.
Know exactly.
Yeah, I have to look.
Appropriate action.
Cause that would be nice if we could approve comments and not just have it on.
Yeah, I don't know technically, not that part of it.
I have to look.
And that's leaving it up to you. So then I, so now we're, now we're back in the same thing. Oh, Kayla, her friend so-and-so posed her comment on this page, but she didn't turn, she didn't let mine through, you know, so then we're censoring what people say.
But it is a censoring situation, I think, like, this is a school district.
But that's, that's up to your interpretation, is what's sensible and what's not. So that's, that's not a, that's.
And that's why what I've done so far is to do it and then see, is, okay, is this relevant to a percentage of the population? Do oppose that comes from.
Right, you know, I would say like, if we censor comments, we're asking for trouble.
You know, I, I personally, I kinda like, you know, that we kinda made it unidirectional. And then, you know, early on, if you could certainly do that, quite if you're looking for feedback, like if you're doing, um, you know, surveying.
Yeah.
Um, to do that, I think that's.
We could ask a question.
Yeah.
In turn along through that, I think maybe, but I don't know. I think the social media makes me nervous. I just, they just can.
But yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, my, my preference would be.
Okay, so sorry.
I just had a thought, and it ma- made me think of like, when, when Julie was saying about social media and then, and then you said about uni- unidirectional, that it's sort of like with our website, like, i- if we keep the Facebook page where the, you and Kayla are the only people that can post and there's no comments, it's similar to when the district puts out an informational piece on our website. People can't interact with that. And, but a lot of people don't go to our website, um, as a matter of course, so it, you could kind of look at it as, they'll look at it on Facebook, but it's unidirectional, it's just for us to push the message out, kinda like our website, but more people have eyes on it than at the website. You know what I mean? If that makes any sense?
No, it, it does, and I think that was kind of, in my mind, in my mind, anyway, that was more.
That was the reason you created it was because people weren't getting information, because they don't go to the website, so.
Yeah.
And I think a challenge, you know, you're probably covering community connections.
Yes.
And I think that if, um, again, my own personal opinion, I think that if, you know, we're getting comments, uh, or if you're feeling comments that we're unapproachable, then maybe the connection tries to think of a way to be approachable within the boundaries of what we're comfortable with too, you know what I mean?
Right.
Uh, and maybe that's, in the past, we've done forums, you know, right now we can't really do.
I know, which is really.
Form in person, but maybe we could do one in some way.
I feel like, I don't know, maybe more people will come.
Right. But, but, you know, I think that we need to work out a lot of details. And then present to the board, see if the board wants to.
I think the fun with those people is outlets.
Oh, I, I agree. I agree. And that, like, right now, everyone needs an outlet of some form or another.
Yeah, right. So we should.
We can, we can talk a little bit, you know.
Okay, so we will keep it one direction.
Did you have anything else? Did anybody else have anything other, other business?
Nope.
All right, so financial report. Tom, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, you have my report. I've outlined the activities from December in the business office. And I also want to highlight that I put that two-page fund balance report in. It's the last of the reports that are included in my portion. I'm just interested to know if that is useful. It is a cash basis report, not an accrual basis report, which means that the only revenues and expenditures that are reflected there are those which have already been posted to the general ledger. So funds received and entries made in the general ledger to recognize the revenue, and expenditures made, checks written and issued to make payments. Those are the, the revenue and expense columns. And then it has a beginning and an ending balance for each one of the funds on the general ledger.
I know. I did look at that when I was reviewing the financial report, and I thought it was a great addition.
Would anyone else feel a little bit?
I think that's a good idea.
Holly, you like it?
Yep, I agree. Thank you, Tom.
I think, I think Tom just may expect to work for himself.
It's a short report, two pages.
Oh, nice, nice. Does anyone have any questions for Tom? Holly, anything?
Nope. Oh, no, Tom and I have been talking a lot lately, so I don't have any.
I was thinking you guys had probably covered everything.
Yep.
Let's move on to the curriculum report. Do you have Kat on? Wayne, do you want to go over the curriculum?
So the curriculum, so Kat's working on a strategic plan. I think she would like to create a, kind of, some action planning around goals for student learning. And she has that strategic plan draft. In fact, she just submitted it about 4:30 today. I haven't had a chance to go through it, but she would like to present it to the board briefly at your March meeting with the hope of meeting with the board, if the board would like for her to continue to develop a, a strategic plan around learning outcomes and form a committee task force that would have board representation, one or two board members, and begin to look at, you know, how we're managing, you know, the, the work of a full-time curriculum instruction and assessment. As you know, we put all of those together this year. We also, next year, Kat will assume the director role of Title I, as far as that administration part goes. So she'll be overseeing all of those instructional grants, including the professional development. So she'd like some direction, but she understands it's a little premature. And she'd like to wait until March to begin that conversation, and then kind of build into a, rolling into more of a vocally normal year in 21, 22, at which point we can begin to see some of her, her expectations dealt with. So that's kind of where we are right now, and she's kind of looking at the whole organization in, in an effort to see where she could use kind of a different position. As you recall, we, for years, have had a, a part-time curriculum instruction, separated from assessment, separated from Title I. So it's a whole new kind of way in, in looking at the organization and how to become more efficient. So that's a conversation for a later date, but I think that sort of summarizes, you know, where she's, where she's thinking right now.
So I think we had a previous discussion about having Kat present something to us in March anyway. So are we all still good with that?
Sure.
All right. The only thing that I will throw in there is that, you know, I think Kat is the third curriculum coordinator that we've had since, since I've been on the board. And some of the concerns that she raises in her reports, we have heard from the other curriculum coordinators in different cohorts, you know? So it's kind of the same story, different words, that you know? And I think it's, you know, if we're, I don't, for me, anyway, you know, the third person now saying some of the same things will be a little bit more serious about addressing some of the issues, because they, they need to be addressed. And out of the three people that are talking about the same concerns, we now have one that's actually looking to put together a conflict and to address it. So.
I wouldn't say the comment.
Absolutely.
First of all, and I'm not sure if it's not, but is it not an expectation that someone that's giving a report to the board that's not something that's been required or. Personally, as a board member, I, I found her report of the inflammatory, and am very surprised and quite a bit disappointed that she would submit such a report to this board and then not participate in the meeting.
Yeah, I also, I was kind of shocked. I feel like most of her reports have been pretty optimistic, and this report was.
Well, she's mentioned these terminologies before.
Right.
Right. But I feel like she needs to be here to expect to submit something like.
Right.
With such negative.
Yeah, this.
And, and not be here, she's disappointed.
Yeah, this was very, I was very surprised going through, and I was like, oh. And then the, the full sheen. It just, it definitely, inflammatory is a good thing.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, like I said, I, in a way, have heard kind of the same story with different ranks, as I said. So I think that we definitely look at it. Wayne, are you still there?
Yes, I am. Sorry.
Uh-oh, did he fall down?
I wonder if Jesse didn't have an opportunity to look.
Yeah, no, no, I, I.
Disappointed in how it happened.
Right. And I think that, Wayne, if you could just, I guess, reemphasize that, you know, when you have a report, unless there's a illness or a good reason that we should be aware of, that we do expect.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of anything, but maybe there is an emergency I'm not aware of.
It was rescheduled, like.
And it is rescheduled, so it could be, you know, so it could be all different things, but the expectation of the board. If we're getting a report, we would like someone there to address it.
There's a message in the chat from Ally that Kat does have a family situation that came up.
And that's fine. That's fine.
Thanks, Ally.
Yeah, thank you, Ally.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to jump in, because, because I saw that pop up.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's fine, because these things, these things happen. You just kind of, good to know ahead of time. So does everyone want to move on to technology, or does anyone want to ask any questions?
I don't think asking Wayne any questions. Fair to Wayne.
No.
All right, then let's move on to technology. So Deb, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have my report before you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain the questions.
Anybody have anything for Deb?
I feel like those laptops are made up. Yeah. That is a bummer.
They're gonna show up on April 1st. How much do you want to bet?
That would be hilarious.
I'm going there to show up like the last minute school.
They're gonna show up next fall.
Well, the latest, which was, I do the latest before a board meeting, which is two weeks ago. And the latest was, there is a big shipment that is supposed to arrive on February 8th. And if we don't get it, then all bets are off for a while, because Chinese New Year starts on February 11th. And China shuts down, you know, on Chinese New Year. So I, I, I continue to stay on top of it. I did, you know, I continued to look for other options. But we even looked into the possibility of Chromebooks, which is a different, I mean, that's sort of what we have, but they're Windows-based. But Justin and I, you know, looked long and hard at Chromebooks, because those are a little more readily available. But the problem is, there'll be problems running the Teams application, and we, we don't want to have that. So we plug away.
Anything else for Deb?
Nope.
All right. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Principals report, and this is, you're up.
All right. First of all, I'm going to apologize for including this food display from the Career Center. I don't know if you read about this, but that's a big block of butter they put in there. I'm looking at that now, so my gosh, I'm not kidding. So whatever they're doing in the culinary classes looks very rich. I know.
Does anyone have any questions for you?
I do have one request, and I forwarded this idea about our remote learning expectations, that if we could add, with your approval, a statement that says, if the camera is not on, you have to show your face or your name, but not a picture of a tree, or your pet donkey, or something like that. So that people can take attendance. So I would, I would like to just have your support for that, if that's okay.
Just their face or a name?
Yes. So I've added, if you're unable to use a camera, a picture of your face or your name can be shown, but no icons or photos of your whatever.
And part of the icon discussion was also kind of like what we were talking about with the Facebook courses. Is how do you determine, if you say inoffensive icons, or then we make that definition.
Right.
So someone will argue, take icons out of it, individual or name or whatever.
I, I don't, I don't want to have any personal in this discussion.
Would that apply to staff as well when we're doing Teams meetings?
I think it should. I think if we do one, we should probably do everyone. Good behavior.
And having the option for your name, so they don't have to have their camera on if they don't want to.
I mean, here is a public meeting, so if somebody says, you know.
We can't tell the public.
That's what I'm saying. So if somebody puts their name up and walks away from class for 15 minutes, we have no idea.
But we can't, I don't, well, I don't think we can say they have to have their camera on, but that's just.
We have negotiated with some families, because kids have anxiety. They don't like their picture. They don't like to see themselves. They don't like to see them.
Right, certain circumstances.
So if, if, for instance, if Mr. Fleming makes a recommendation, we make that modification. I feel like if it's justified, but it's really hard to take attendance when you see a picture of a pine tree.
Yeah.
I, I have, I have one comment, one question, because I know, like, Anne had, had included that, and then something to Sean and I. And I, you know, part of it was, some of it was, you know, offensive and whatnot. But so if they have a photo of themselves, I know, would, I assume, and may, I don't, I don't know how you would wear this, but it would, would it have to follow, like, the dress code? So like, the photo wouldn't be of them, you know, with a hat or a gang, you know, gang, whatever the dress code says is not appropriate.
I, I think that's understood at this point, but if.
Teachers.
I don't know how understood that might be with a hat, or who knows what, you know, they could wear.
Yeah, if we're gonna make that, it will be some very black and white. I think they could have their cam on unless there is accommodation required about.
Yeah, so just maybe something that, if there's a picture that follows the dress code or something.
A school appropriate.
Yes, you know, this was, these are really challenging times, having parents to have a good learning environment at home. And when a teacher tells me, say, well, the little guy, some big guy had him in an arm lock and this and that. It's like, at what point do we start calling, do you see, well, when we see behavior like that, we have to take action.
Right.
Yeah, these are the only icons I'm getting.
Holly, you had something?
No, I just want to say, I know, we were saying, you know, unless there's accommodations or, or approval, you need to have your camera on. There was discussion at, I think it was at our, our board meeting for New Hampshire School Board Association, that I don't remember what district or what part of the state it was, that they, the board wanted to make it, that, you know, you had to have it on. And because of differences in, you know, poverty levels, or who knows what, in the background, you know, they felt that, you know, it wasn't, you know, appropriate, or, I, I don't know, want to say kind, I don't know how it was. But to force kids who, you know, their surroundings might not be great, and to have their classmates watching it, and then they get bullied for it, or what, whatnot, you know? So I, I, I don't like saying you need to have the camera on. I, I think having a photo, like, quite a few people, even some of our, you know, administrators, you know, we, we, some of them don't ever have their face on our meetings, and that's perfectly fine, you know? So, you know, I'm, I'm just saying that. I just want to throw that out there, that that was a discussion, that that could be really upsetting for some kids who have some not great situations at home that they don't want people to see.
That's right.
And even having to be unmuted, Aubrey has to be unmuted, and I realized how very not quiet my family is. And there's dogs barking, and people are plowing. I'm like, oh, sorry, guys. So, yeah.
Joe, you asked that question for reasons. I'm curious about what prompted you to ask it. Teachers need to do the same.
Some teachers use icons.
When we talk about modeling behavior and stuff like that.
Right. No, I know. I thought maybe he was thinking that there was an educational purpose. I just was, I was, I, I was just wondering what the, what the premise for the question. Thank you, thank you.
So I was, I had a quick question, and it is, with math tests. So is math testing mandatory, or can students opt out of that?
It's not mandatory. We, we try to have every student do it, because it's the longitudinal data, especially used in special ed and in Title I programs, because you can see from fall to fall, look at growth. So we did send home the math reports that we got this year, and I had parents call me up, ask me questions. What does SP19 mean? Well, that's the spring test that they took in spring of 2019. We compare it, told spring 2020, but we didn't do it last spring. So, you know, it is good data, and we just look at reading and math. And once a year, we do language usage. So it's good data.
I was very happy you sent this one, too.
It took us a while to get our act together, but we did get it.
Yeah, it's good.
Anything else for you?
Nope.
Holly, did you have something?
Nope.
So Joe, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman. You have my report, and I do have that one proposal on the table about the onsite temperature screening. I think Mrs. Hemlo can attest to the difficulties of sub-squeezing weather and our thermometers, which worked really well. And I think we just have a small window left. But the idea would be that we, and when we return to school on February 8th, and until time when the temperature in the morning is typically 35 degrees or above, we would have the screening done at the classroom door. Any kids that were, had a fever, they would go right to the isolation room and have be in there. This timeframe that they'd have exposure to anybody would be minimized, because they're traveling through the hallways, and they're supposed to be staying farther apart. We'd still have our screening information at each of the entrances that the students enter by. So anybody who is on the nurse's, you know, off-site list, and should still be off-site, would be caught immediately in that way as well. So short of getting some, you know, a heat sensor type of thermometers, I don't really see it being a really effective way to go about it right now.
Yeah, between it being so cold, and then the heat in the car being so hot, too. Like, that's, we had to pull over for Kylie, because Kylie, it works too well. It definitely is. It'd be more effective inside. We'd probably get it more accurate.
Thoughts from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. So who is, who is going to take the temperature? The classroom teacher? As, like, when the kids are coming into their room with, what, you know, with what, what all the other stuff they're doing? So are they the ones that's going to take the temperature? As like when the kids are coming into their room with what, you know, with what, what all the other stuff they're doing. So are they the ones that's going to take the temperature?
Yes.
Okay.
Jim? You're okay with it?
I just, as a comment, I think we need to just maybe send out information to families that, you know, temperature won't be screened at the car, but be prepared to come back immediately if, you know, your child does end up having a fever. Just so like, we're really going to need that turnaround time to be quick.
So Joe, what do you need from us?
Well, just to your approval, that, that's an acceptable way to do it until we get to more reasonable temperatures in the morning. Because I think the other, the other thing that it impacts is it kind of becomes a safety hazard because we backed up too far.
Yep.
That we're getting out into one nineteen sometimes.
Yep.
Uh, so, so Wayne, it's, it's, it sounds like that would be kind of an amendment to the plan that we approved. Do we need to vote on that or can we just?
You know, I, I think if, unless you have an objection from a board member, I think we'll move ahead and it's temporary. Obviously, we hope by March first. Uh, we don't have many of those days. Uh, but if you're, it's, it's a workaround uh, in, in that we did not consider that temperature would be such, would have such huge impact relative to our ability to take uh, the, the temperature of a student prior to entering the building.
So, um, so you're okay with it and you guys are okay with it. Holly, what was your thought?
Yeah, I, I just have, well, so I asked, you know, like I, I am, you know, just that my question that it adds one more thing to the classroom teacher having to do right when the kids come in with lunch count and all the other stuff they're doing, but um, my other question, actually, I was rereading, I was just rereading it and it says if the student has a fever, the nurse will be called and the student will wait in the isolation room. So how does the student get? Like, is the, the teacher then expected to take this kid to the nurse or does the nurse come and get the student? That's, you know, just one of my other questions is how does the kid get to the nurse?
So uh, we can use the example that happened when we um, had to address the close contacts on Monday morning first thing. So staff members were assigned to go up to the classroom. And as the students we identified as being in close contact came to the classroom, we brought them back down to the isolation room. It was just like on a rotating basis.
I'm sorry, you kind of cut out there. So we identified a close contact and then what? I'm sorry.
So the, so there'll be staff members that bring the students. The short story is a staff member will bring the students from the room to the isolation room.
Okay. Yes. The teacher's not leaving the room to take the kids. Somebody's going to come and get the kid.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and my only other thought, I don't know how many classrooms, I can't remember how many you have now that are um, split. I mean, I don't know if it's just fifth grader or if it's other ones, but so you'll just have somebody else assigned to the other classroom. You know what I mean? Like there's four fifth grade. So or, or will it be the person, actually the sub who's there that day? Will they take it actually?
There, there's either a sub or sometimes a paraprofessional. I might, some of those subs are very, you know, consistent. And I could rely upon them, I think, Holly, but I might prefer to rely on a paraprofessional in that classroom.
Okay. All right. Those were my questions. I mean, I, I, I assume, I mean, and, and you don't have to, but I mean, I, I assume because you brought it to us first that, that we haven't. Well, I shouldn't say I assume. That's awful of me. Have, have you talked to teachers about it to see how they feel?
No, the only people I've ran this by are Ben, the nurse, Mrs. Giorio, I think Mrs. Almaritas reviewed it and Mr. Woolridge.
Okay.
So Holly, in favor or not in favor?
Um, you know, I, I understand the problem and definitely, because I know they've been talking about this since the, you know, since it first started to get cold, but um, I, I, I just, you know, I'm, I'm just concerned about adding one more thing to teachers in the morning like that. So without, because everybody had input on the reopening plan and when we tweak it for something like this, it's going to add stuff where they already have extra duties and parent staff have duties in the morning or whatever that uh, without hearing what, how they feel. Um, I, I mean, I, I, I just, I'm not in favor of it, but I appreciate it and thank you, Joe, for trying to come up with it, but I just, I don't feel great about it.
Okay. Um, and I'm kind of in the middle of everybody because I kind of, I absolutely see that point. Uh, but I absolutely see the point that right now with the temperature, what we're doing isn't working. We have to do something. Um, I am generally in favor of moving ahead uh, with Joe's plan. But I would absolutely want to make sure that a detailed correspondence went out to every single family of the elementary school. Let them know that there was a change in the morning procedure.
Yeah.
Um, and if that happens, I can live with the rest.
Is this just for elementary school or middle high school also?
We have tag teamed our thermometer usage. So for instance, at the parent drop off, Mrs. Fenrich, myself and usually Wayne Gallagher, the three of us will take turns and well, if it gets, if your thermometer gets cold, you wait in the foyer.
Oh, yeah.
And when it's really cold, we have to come to the foyer. So we've kind of worked out some of the kinks, but it is very interesting. You know, you might be able to get three or four readings and then your thermometer has to go warm up again. I found if I keep it inside my coat, it stays warm.
Yep. Yeah. For the elementary, they're just, yeah, such a run back and forth would be like.
Could work out.
Yeah.
Team like where they came to the.
Yeah.
Um, gym or something first, maybe. I don't know, but that's how we, we, our system seems to be working fine.
Yeah, I remembered your story about the foyer. So that, that's why I was just thinking about the elementary school. Yeah.
And it really did back up pretty good the other day because none of them were working. So it's definitely, and one nineteen is right there. There's nowhere else to go.
Right. So Joe, it sounds like everybody's, well, the majority is in favor. Um, and how do you all feel about correspondence? Do you want the correspondence to go?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. All right. So it sounds like you're good to go with correspondence, please. Uh, does anyone else have anything for Joe? Or Joe, do you have anything else for us?
No, I just wanted to make sure that it's, it's been honestly just kind of difficult. So I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss that.
All right, awesome. All right. So then we have the superintendent's report is next. So Wayne, you're up.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, you have my report. Uh, I spoke uh, with Jay Khan yesterday. Uh, the revenue part, which I spoke to earlier tonight, uh, is the good news. Uh, and the money coming from the federal government, it's almost hard to imagine, but in the current bill, there's half a trillion dollars designated for K twelve schools. Three hundred and fifty billion goes directly to the states to take care of any issues related to schools uh, starting back up because there's a real uh, move to make sure that schools have everything they need to be in session. Uh, and then there's a three, or a hundred and thirty billion dollars that are going directly to K twelve without, you know, just bypass the indirect side of the, of the state. So there's a lot of money coming our way, even if there's a compromised bill that ends up going through. Uh, so the, this is going to be an interesting uh, role in, you know, I'm very happy we've been able to do so much as far as in-person learning. Uh, but there's a real uh, push right now to make sure that all the funds that are needed will be available. Uh, so that's the good news. Uh, of course, there's a lot of work that'll happen. Every other year we have this biennial budget issue. This year we have uh, the issue complicated with the fiscal disparity aid, which was dropped uh, in lieu of the commission, uh, which did a lot of work in, in their work went to the general court on December first. Uh, there's also a lawsuit against the state relative to funding. Uh, the commission recommends a statewide property tax, which we have on the books, but it's, it's just smoke and mirrors as far as money that going from one district to another. So there, there's a lot of good news for Hinsdale, uh, but it's nothing you can put your finger on, but it's not jello on the wall. Uh, it's, it's moving ahead and I think as you'll see as we get through this year, that we will have the funds. And I do think uh, that it won't be that much longer where our staff will begin uh, the vaccine process and that'll make uh, things simpler. Um, so anyway, good news on a lot of fronts. Uh, and I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that.
Any questions for Wayne?
Uh, I just want to um, add when Wayne said about it won't be too long till people get, the staff gets vaccinated that and, and I'm sure he knows this and, and I think a lot of people have heard about this. It's been in the paper and we talked about this um, at the N H S B A and I know Keene and a couple of other districts, I guess, sent a letter to the governor um, that teachers got moved out of the current uh, round and pushed back to the next one that I think starts in March or something. So well, I should, teacher, staff, all like school employees, so not just teachers, but you know, so there are people advocating to have them moved up, but right now that's like March. So.
Well, I guess relatively soon, but
Relatively.
If you're waiting in line for a vaccine, it probably seems like eternity.
Yeah.
Anything, anyone else?
Anything for me? Uh, I just have a question on the vaccine. Um, are we, are we had to make that mandatory first time?
I don't know if we can.
I don't think we can either, right? I don't think we can. Okay. Somebody asked me that. I'm like, I don't think we can. I don't think we can.
No, I would.
I'll be.
That would be a problem for us.
Yeah.
I don't think we'll have to. I think people are going to want to take the vax.
Right. Well, we can mandate what students have before they come to school, but.
Yeah, I think this is different though.
Yeah. That's what I mean. I know we often share a thought, but we don't. Somebody asked me and I just wasn't sure if we were going to fill it. But I assume.
Yeah. Um, all right. Anything else for Wayne? All right. So we've got the committee reports. Uh, we are, you know, we're getting up on eight o'clock. We've got a lot of non-publics. We've got people waiting. So I'd like to go through these committee reports as quickly as I can, if possible. Um, personnel committee. Holly, do you want to deal with that?
Uh, just super briefly, we have a TA and we're going to be bringing that to the board non-public.
All right. Health and wellness?
Uh, we postponed this week's meeting. Uh, not yet.
Town budget?
Oh, I think we covered it all.
I think we did too. Uh, staff development?
And we are not meeting right now. They're all used up for the year anyway.
All right. Legislation, N H S B A?
Yes. So we did conduct the meeting. Holly was there as uh, the board of directors. I was there as a delegate. Um, everything went pretty good. Uh, one of the continuous resolutions was in regards to the restriction of firearms that remain um, as a, uh, on the continuing resolution for the um, uh, keeping firearms off campus. Uh, so that was good. They may be uh, changing the date of the annual meeting for the fall. Um, so that could happen. So I said it January would happen uh, in October and November. Um, and um, sixty-one uh, districts are represented out of a hundred and six. Oh, and also federal level, uh, the um, President Biden's education secretary uh, nominee is dedicated to his name is Mcwell, but, but don't. So. Yes, we confirmed it as far as I know, but that's, just changed it.
Thanks, Jim. Emergency management, anything? Nothing. Uh, Wyndham Career Center, anything? Uh, past advisory did not meet today. Um, selectmen, uh, so I did go to the uh, select meeting this week. Um, Holly has been helping me out because a lot of the selectmen meetings have been happening with budgets. Holly's been there. And Jim has filled in for me once. Um, as I stated earlier, my um, availability is not great. It's pressing a lot of demands on my uh, ability to do everything that I normally do. Um, but I did go to the selectmen meeting on Monday and they were talking, they approved uh, their warrant articles. They went over that and they um, were talking about, you know, moving. A town meeting, uh, but their moderator hasn't really made a decision yet. So there's still, that's still up in the air for that. Um, facilities?
Facilities also met last week. Uh, very briefly, uh, we did uh, review uh, the market sign. We're going to have a meeting um, uh, in February with Catherine Lynch. Uh, we did reconfirm that the eight thousand that the class of uh, twenty twenty gave us is inappropriate. But financial account. And uh, we may, uh, well, we will be revisiting a, a small repair to the roof at the elementary school over Joe's office and uh, the secretary's office there. So uh, that might be something that's not looked at as a very big uh, facility event, but uh, we'll be looking at trying to fix that.
Thank you. Uh, community connections, I kind of feel like we did.
Yep.
Um, behavioral support team?
Uh, so we met today and I don't think as of right now, there's a whole lot to do there. The school level teams are looking at S E L programs. Um, we are all set with Eric Mann. Um, they're figuring out schedules with him and in the most kind of cost-effective way. And he, they did get the price reduced down to the amount we put in the budget and it looks like it's going to be good to go there. Should we hold off on talking about the S E L programs until, because Tim said that team was meeting tomorrow. And they have a couple of options and one of them would also um, be able to be used if we were remote, which is a nice aspect. Um, yeah, they have the S V Q so we know how many kids are tier three, tier two. So work is being done.
Uh, so I have a question. Uh, because I did sit in as a citizen on the um, last, was it last Wednesday's budget committee meeting? And um, I believe when we were going over the line items, you know, some of the uh, the lines with this uh, initiative, we questioned this on the board members and um, you know, Anne, you had made a comment that um, uh, because you, yeah, you had made a comment that I want to say was along the lines of, you didn't, you didn't, weren't sure how um, you know, Eric Mann was spinning in the, in the middle high school. So you're looking at doing something else?
Well, we, I think Tim clarified that pretty well today that we, we are looking at what kinds of programs really fit the needs of the kids. Eric has not connected as well with our staff as he has with Joe's and I, and so one of the things we talked about today, and I think Sarah and Joe brought it up, is that we need to meet as a whole. Sarah, Joe, Eric, Tim and I. So we're all on the same page. I think that's a good idea. And the other point that Sarah brought up in the meeting today was about marketing. So that people really understand what social emotional curriculum is because I have many parents who say, my child's not going to come to advisory because they don't need counseling. They, they, they don't understand it. So I think we need to do a better job. And I think the support that Tim is talking about with that program base.
Yeah.
As a monitoring tool embedded in it, it's K through twelve. So it's a curriculum. It's not a person. So that's what we were talking about with, with that.
And he said they paired very nicely together because S E L and positive behavior support are kind of two, they go together, but they're also two separate things. You know, how do we handle discipline? And how are we teaching our kids to regulate themselves? So they do go together, but they are also separate things. So he said the two paired very nicely together and uh, base especially sounded like more definitely for middle high school. You do any S E L stuff with them, they're not having a whole group discussion. They watch stuff together and then they can reply on their laptop to the teacher privately. So the teacher gets a lot of information and it's, I think kids will be more willing to be honest and actually participate that way in middle high school. So I thought that was very encouraging.
I just, I just wanted to follow up on that just because um, you know, when it was brought up at budget, I was like, oh, what? Yeah. Because like we, we've talked many, many times about, you know, this is our, you know, primary thing that we need to get done. You know, I don't ever remember anything being optional about it. So I just wanted to follow up and make sure that it was still kind of on track. Even if that track is taking some curves, because that's to be expected. I just wanted to make sure it was going on track.
Yep. Can I, can I jump in Sean for a sec? Since I was, I was at that meeting as well because I was budget rep. So I just want to clarify, I don't know if it'll come back up at the budget meeting, but I know there were budget committee members who took it the same way that I took it and it sounds like Sean took it. When Anne said, you know, Eric Mann is working great at the elementary, doesn't seem to fit in to whatever, however it was worded and she, she did say, and so we're looking at, you know. And she, she did say, and so we're looking at, you know, going else, you know, using some other thing. Or I forget exactly how it was, but it, that it did sound like the middle high was not gonna use Eric Mann. So I just wanna make, just in case it comes back up and they're expecting to see that line item reduced because they think the middle high is not gonna use Eric. We are using Eric, but we're kind of like clarifying within him with SEL and not entirely PBIS like what he was and right? Is, am I hearing that right?
I think you're hearing it right, but I think the clarification again is that Eric Mann is a trainer. He's a consultant. What we're looking for is a curriculum.
Right. And that's what is needed. Definitely. That's. And, uh, Joe today was talking about a lot of the stuff that we're hoping for with, you know, longevity and having stuff in place where it doesn't depend on the people there. You know, anyone can come in and it will still work and continuity. And so I think it is definitely going in the right direction.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally on board with that. Just as budget rep, I wanna make sure. Cause I think it came across as, oh, we're not gonna use Eric in that building. So maybe they, I'm just anticipating Monday, they say, well, are you gonna cut that line a bit? And the answer is no, because we're using Eric, but it was just a larger kind of thing. Okay.
And I think, and I think looking at it like Kayla said in terms of, but actually you recorded Joe. So I'm gonna put Joe's, you know, it's by looking at it in terms of longevity. Cause this, this, it can't be, it can't be some of our typical initiatives where it's like we're all gone home for six months and then drop it.
Yeah.
Gotta stick with it.
This is, this is a long-term thing.
Right. And we're not gonna see results right away, which can be discouraging, but it's gonna, you gotta be in it for the long haul.
Right.
Yeah. And we knew that before the pandemic hit.
Right. No, that actually seems to be helping with behavior with just reports. So, you know, one positive.
That's scary. Um, all right. So are we done with, with this? All right. So then joint loss?
Um, joint loss, I had a work meeting come up that day. Um, so I didn't go to the meeting. So I would defer to Ann, uh, to Mrs. Free Tech.
So we, we did have a meeting and we reviewed some of the accidents. Of course, there were people fell on the ice. Um, we talked about COVID and cleaning processes. Charlie was there. Joe was there. I think you were there. Um, I didn't bring my minutes with me, but we, we did meet and I think it was, we're planning to meet again to our usual meeting. Joe, do you remember anything?
Um, I think, uh, the other part was that the risk assessments were done or at least partially done. And those findings have been, are being addressed and should be fixed by February first.
And, and the building, Sean, and people of buildings.
Right. Yeah. Inspecting buildings.
Building inspections.
And, um, our falls, are they okay? Like, is everybody doing okay?
Everything, yeah.
All right.
Everyone's fine.
All right. Good. Um, okay. So then citizens comments and you wanna handle or wrangle citizens comments?
Yeah. Um, I do have one form that needs to be. This is from Crystal Gaffey. Question for you, because I was late joining tonight. Was there any talk about going remote and still allowing winter sports? I wanted to ask if it hadn't been already, what is the rationale for allowing athletes to still play when there are self concerns, the kids being, well, just that we have to close the school through COVID? Concerns with positive cases within the district, then we need to pause the sports as well. So it didn't go back.
Does anybody wanna like guess that or do you want to do that? So, uh, what I'll do is I'll just refer back to the, uh, November fourth recording, uh, cause we've all referred back to that and we can also refer back to the recording of, um, the, I believe it was the last meeting that we had.
Yeah.
Where we reviewed the initial, um, acceptance of basketball to continue. Um, and the, what was agreed upon at that meeting was that if there was a, uh, a case in the general public of the school, um, that it would not affect sports, sports would continue. Uh, sports would only pause if there was a positive case in, uh, in one of the athletes. Um, and the general over, that was the, what the board agreed to. Um, it was not, it was not a unanimous vote, but it was a majority vote. And, um, the final decision on what happens with that, um, as far as even, you know, being remote now would be up to the administration. So that would be up to, um, Mrs. Free Tech or Mr. Woolridge. Does anybody wanna add to that?
I would say that the community sentiment expressed at that meeting was overwhelmingly in favor of sports, prosperous, as well as the students were here.
Um, all right, Ann, go ahead.
Okay. And I'm gonna go do, so if I call your name, I'll give you a sec, a couple of seconds to respond if you want to unmute. Elise Cody?
All set. Thank you all.
Thank you. Yeah. Uh, Leslie Parkinson?
So I do have one, uh, one comment that I wanted to make about the, um, temperature screening, screening in the mornings.
Okay.
Uh, so, so, um, the, I work, I am one of the screeners for the, the littles, the pre-K through first.
And the, the worst part for the thermometers is for our walking children. And my other concern is just that we're still gonna need staff outside because a lot of the littles forget that they need to have their mask on when they're exiting the cars. And that's, that, those are my only two concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Kathy Quazador? Uh, Pollack, do you have anything?
I'm all set. Thank you.
You're welcome. Julie, do you have anything?
I'm all set. Thanks.
iPhone? John Robinson?
I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Donna Foster?
All set.
Thank you. Giovania? Jess Mahoney?
Hi. Yes, I have a couple of comments, if that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I recently recovered from COVID. Um, and I was lucky. I didn't have really, really bad symptoms. I didn't suffer. Um, but it is very contagious and it is something we should be taking the utmost precautions with, uh, especially with our staff and students. And I feel that when there's COVID in the school, it does need to be closed because we, we can't help it that the kids aren't always separated, especially with arrivals, dismissals. Um, I know I see way more than I'm supposed to see with numbers of students. I see different grade levels all the time. Um, and yes, it's disruptive to go back and forth, but perhaps we should be remote until we're all vaccinated. That way we can teach safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. iPad Pro? Victoria Martel?
All set. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Robo?
Hi, I just have a couple of comments real quick. Um, unfortunately I was in close contact with somebody in my class, um, right before Christmas break. Luckily I didn't get COVID, but because of the protocols, I had to miss Christmas. So that was a really difficult thing, um, for me at least. And I also agree with Jess that just as back and forth, it's not good for anybody. It's not, I know we're trying to like save the parents and like get them back to work, but telling them they have less than 24 hours to figure it out isn't helping anyone. So I think trying to figure out some sort of stability is beneficial for burnout of teachers, burnout of kids, burnout of parents. Um, so that's just something to keep in mind.
Thank you. Patty Wallace?
All set. Thank you.
Abby Garrett?
Hi. Um, I do have something I'd like to read on behalf of Ally Mangan. Um, she had to leave early due to, uh, like being a parent and taking care of her kid. So she wanted me to read this just on her behalf, but, um, I agree with this sentiment wholeheartedly, which is why I'm comfortable reading it. Um, so some teachers would like to reevaluate the effectiveness of the current COVID response plan or policy in place and the impact that it's having on staff, children and families. We believe that there's no one to blame for the negative impacts. The plans in place were meant to keep us all safe and were created with the best of intent. We genuinely believe that everyone, school board, parents, staff and children are doing the best that they can in this challenging situation, but we're all hitting a breaking point. This is the third time going abruptly remote. The third time everyone in our school community has had to abruptly change their schedules for themselves, their children and their families. Parents are struggling last minute to find childcare. Parents have, have to become the teacher overnight. Parents are living on the edge, waiting for the call. Teachers have to cancel the week's worth of plans that they had prepared and change it all to match, uh, two-week remote model in one day. Teachers are living on the edge, waiting for the call. Teachers who have children have to do it both, have to do both roles and both levels of changes in 24 hours. Some teachers are feeling personally and professionally frustrated. Burnout's at an all-time high and everyone is impacted. We recognize that the system we all agreed upon is actually failing us. It's unreasonable to continue like this when neighboring districts are collaborating and have had more success with other models and plans. The goal is to get kids back into school and families back to work. Our current model is doing neither. We understand that remote learning is hard on all, on all and the current inconsistent schedule is proving much harder and worse on all members of the Hinsdale community. Our hope today is that we can realize, recognize that our current COVID response system is failing, even when the intent was positive and do better. Let's work to find a middle ground that prevents us from all feeling largely disconnected. We're happy to lay out some options or models that neighboring, neighboring districts are using and support the board in choosing a plan that will better support our community. Thank you.
Thank you. iPhone? Uh, Paulus Nye?
Hi. So I have a comment about the, um, temperatures taken inside by the teachers. I don't have a problem with me taking the temperature. My problem is my class was at the end of the hallway and my boys and girls have to walk from the very end of the hallway in the building, past all of the first grade classes before they get to mine. So there's going to be a buildup and a line of all the kids waiting for their teachers to get to them. So when I finally get their temperature, um, do I turn them around and bring them all the way past all those kids back to the quarantine room? Now mama's already drove, she's, you know, gone. She's driven to work or home. We put them in the quarantine room and how long are they gonna be in there before, you know, oh, the school gives them a call, but they don't answer the phone. So I just see, you know, I know the cars are lined up outside, but now we're gonna have the children lined up together, waiting for their turn to get their temperature taken. So mine is just, you know, just the managerial piece of how that's all going to work. I'm not sure, does that include the bus kids, um, getting off the bus and coming inside as well to have their temperatures taken or will their temperature still be taken on the bus? So mine's just a, there needs to be discussion about how that's going to work. Thanks.
Thank you. Sarah Pulhar? Megan Conrad?
Hi guys. Um, I first wanna thank you for your continued caution, you know, in the pandemic. Um, I think you're doing a good job. I think your hearts are all in the right place. Um, I, I wanna portray, I guess, similar sentiment, um, as some of the previous people that have spoken. Um, as a parent, I personally, um, am very lucky that we have parents or that are able to, um, teach our son from home, um, so we can continue to work. Um, but it is disruptive, the back and forth. Um, my suggestion would be, I think there's a lot of different things you can discuss, but my suggestion, um, would be that we had a continue, a consistent one case a week from Christmas all the way through till we went back. Um, so that to me is if we're gonna continue with the same model of one case, we go remote and we're consistently having one case a week, you know, it was inevitable that it was only a matter of time for us to be back out. So my suggestion would just be to, you know, maybe give it at least a week or two of no cases. If we're gonna continue with the same model, um, you know, if you discuss a different model and you're able to be in longer, even if you have one case, you know, that, that's different. But if, if we do continue with this, I think we should have at least a week or two without, um, having a case. Um, and also to kind of, um, along the lines of, um, what Mrs. Snide just said. Um, you know, when, when you drop your kid off to school, some people go straight to work. So, I mean, I, again, it's kind of the back and forth. I totally understand what you're saying, cause there's definitely been, um, a time or two where, you know, Kate's temperature hasn't worked because the thermometer wasn't working because it was too cold. So I completely understand the need for possibly a change, but, um, it, that could also be a disrupt, disruption to schedules. So I, I guess, you know, just look at what the least impact of disruption is. Um, and I, I do sympathize with those that don't have the family around them like we do. So I'm certainly, you know, a minority of how lucky we are to have that. But, um, I think it's more disruptive to make people turn around in 24 hours and find childcare than to have a system that's working and just continue with that until we have a week or two without cases and, um, you know, try and keep the back and forth to a minimum. So thank you again. I think you guys are doing a great job, but that's just my, my suggestion.
Thank you. Giovania?
Hi, sorry, Ann. Um, you know, I'm a parent at the elementary school and, uh, like Victoria, I was in her room and I was exposed. And, you know, as a parent, we have multiple responsibilities throughout the day. We are not just in one classroom. Um, I, for one, I'm running specials. I have recess duty. I have a morning duty and I have an afternoon duty. So I am all around the building all day long. And I can tell you for one, we aren't cohorting and, you know, I just, I really hope that perhaps, you know, we could reevaluate, um, how, you know, we do things, you know? Um, I really think we should be closed until there's a vaccine as well. I just think there's just so, there's just, you know, there's just a lot going on and I just think that's just the best thing at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jess Danny?
All set. Thank you.
McKendie Bonnet?
All set. Thank you.
Welcome. Angela's iPhone?
Hi there. I, as Teresa D'Orio, just, uh, wanted to thank the board for their continued support, uh, both as a parent and as a teacher. So thank you for everything that you're doing for all of us. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, Richard?
Yeah.
All right. Lindsay?
Hi there. I have, um, two quick things. One, um, I'll start with, it's just something that I wanted to clarify. I don't know if I can real quick, um, that was said, um, Ms. Free Tech said it and you guys are talking about it again, that the, uh, middle high school, um, will continue with Eric Mann and the, his company or, um, will be moving on to something else? If I could just get that like, um.
Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, like will or will not?
So we, we are currently working with Eric Mann and we plan to continue with the professional development with Eric Mann. But we're also looking for some kind of a curriculum to sustain the work that we're gonna do.
Okay, curriculum. Okay, thank you. Um, and then the other thing, um, on the major topic is that, um, I don't think that schools should be the ones supporting the parents and worrying about their jobs. Like get the kids in so that parents can be working and supporting. That's on their employers. Um, schools are here for students, their education, their safety and their wellbeing. And their safety and their wellbeing, um, and their education is not being taken care of by this ping ponging back and forth, um, going in, going out for two weeks and then coming in for a week and then going out for two more weeks is not, um, giving them the proper education. And it's not giving the teachers enough time, um, to get them the right amount of like going back for the elementary school, um, having this pivot day, doesn't give the elementary schools the right amount of time to give a whole week's remote lesson. So they're not getting the proper education in my personal opinion. And we're not doing right by their wellbeing by ping ponging them around and it's not.